This is what joint meetings are going to be billing us and this is what we have to pay. Same thing with the-
Right, but you had said to us a couple of meetings ago that we had to approve that increase in the sewer rate because if not, we didn't have enough money to cover our expenses.
Mm-hmm.
My question to you is, is this three months' worth of expenses counting on that money being provided?
Uh, no. No. The shortfall's going to be in revenue for next year. And unless we increase the revenue, that's not going to cover our expenditures that we have here. And we're going to wind up with a deficit next year. Question number two. If the revenues continue to drop, if we have a settlement with the two large industrial customers, then those expenses should be covered. But again-
Is that going to happen before September?
We have, I was going to go into this later, but we had a mediation scheduled for-
I will go legit.
Yeah, that's okay. We have a meeting scheduled for July, mediation.
Are you saying, you want to discuss that in this meeting or next week?
Now we could, now we have a lot of time.
Okay, just go ahead. I'll let you go, allow you to head. Tony and I had this conversation this afternoon-
Yes.
And that was more reminding me.
I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to play today.
Go ahead, Tony. Go ahead, go ahead.
You're going to have mediation.
We have a mediation scheduled for July upon a request of these two large industrial customers who already paid their bills. We gave them a month's notice. They were supposed to show up in July. They couldn't make it. So now we're pushed off till August 7th.
Hopefully, before the city, the administration presents a budget, we should have somewhere of an idea on that, correct?
However, however, you've got to remember now, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do, we have a public hearing scheduled for July 23rd for the sewer rate increase. And as I mentioned to our council president earlier today, by next Friday, we'll have an idea of what kind of surplus we have and what kind of revenues we have for the sewer at year-end. We had our budget on June 30th. Okay, we're just wrapping up the plans. So if there's any, let's say, light tunnel, well, we can push back that rate increase for a month after we have that August 7th mediation. We're going to have a good feel after that mediation whether we're going forward or not. And if we don't, in September, we're going to have to pass some kind of a sewer rate increase in order to cover these expenses because these guys haven't paid the bill. What's happening, joint meeting charges us for their expenditures and we don't have the money from them to pay a joint meeting.
That's what I'm saying. So this temporary budget includes in here an expenditure at the joint meeting-
Yes.
-based on amount that we don't have the revenue for.
Right, right. So that's where it's-
That was my question. Okay. So then, my next question is, and this will be my final one, Mr. President. If we multiply this temporary emergency budget appropriation over the course of times four, can we get an idea of what the administration is proposing as far as a increase in taxes?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the proposal was about a 15% increase. The residential quarterly bill would go from approximately $95 to about $110 per quarter. $95 to $110 per average family of four. But again, you know, we're hoping-
It's about a $400-$500 increase for the year.
No, $15. $15 for the quarter.
You said $15. You said 15%.
Yeah, 15%, but of a quarterly bill, a quarterly bill right now for a family of four-
Not a family of four, it's a house.
A house.
Or whatever's a house is. There's houses that are paying $10,000 in taxes, so $2,500 a quarter.
No, this is for the water, for the water and sewer.
No, I didn't ask that. You didn't answer my question. If we multiply the entire temporary budget that we're going to approve, it's not just the sewer, right?
Okay, I thought we were talking about the sewer.
Different question.
We're off the sewer.
Right. The municipal sewer, all of them together. We're going to be, you're asking us to approve a temporary budget for a quarter with this request, right? Quarter of the year, 23, three months.
No, this is the budget. We already approved, council already approved the rate increase for the municipal tax bills. This was back in July where we approved the tax rate. June, June, in June, first meeting in June. So in other words, the tax bills that are going out, the regular tax bills, not the sewer, the regular tax bills that are going out for August and November, an average home will be increased by $75 a quarter, okay? Of that $75, 35 relates to the Board of Ed. And 35 for August and November, and there's another 35 for the Board of Ed in February and May, that's over $210 strictly from the Board of Ed that the residents have to cover in addition to the city portion.
Go back to my, I go back to my point. Then our taxes are going to go up approximately $400 for the year.
Oh, yes, yes. And half of that is attributed to the Board of Ed, that 7.5% increase that they have. That was my question.
Counselman McKinnon.
Getting back to those two sewer customers that are not paying, it doesn't seem fair that we are, in a sense, providing them a loan at 0% interest. Is there a interest or a penalty factor that can be assessed to these customers who are clearly stalling on coming to some sort of conclusion on this issue?
Well, we've been in litigation now over three years and we've had, let's say, maybe a dozen people deposed. Personally, I've been deposed three times. I spent maybe 12 to 15 hours in a deposition. The lawsuit is a long, drawn-out affair. We're coming to the conclusion, though, as far as either remediation on August 7th, see if there's any progress. If there's not any progress, then the special master, the mediator, will offer recommendations to the Superior Court over here in Union County. And we'd have to go to trial if we can't mediate. But these people, there's literally millions of dollars. We have a settlement offer on the table, which I think is fair. We can't really discuss it now. We'll, you know, give it another special meeting. But we hope to settle this case and get all back payment.
But my point is, in August, they can say, well, we're not ready. It was an emergency. We can't make it.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, the special, what did you call them?
Special master.
Special master's got to say, enough. You can't continue to delay. Is the special master prepared to do that?
We're going to find out. August 7th, this is, you know, pretty much a D date. It's very, you know, very convoluted and drawn out, really. I mean, we didn't plan it that way. We're off, we've been offering settlements, fair and reasonable, and they've just been delaying, act as a wall. And so on. I mean, we got one customer, Lorco, hasn't paid in years, and Michael's Foods is paying, like, say, 50% of their charges in the last two or three years. But it's just an enormous task and hopefully we get some satisfaction. I think by all statutes and case history that we have a good case going forward. If you guys are not paying the bills, they're unjustly enriched, I guess, by this. But we'll see. Going forward, and if there's no movement, you know, we had talked about cutting off service or putting up the tax sales and that type of thing, but we know, but you can't do that at this point due to cycles. So we'll know better if they're serious on August 7th, if they're not, then we'll see. But there should be some kind of, I would say, well, I shouldn't say the conclusion, I'd say over the next few months. But then, if we go to trial and if we win, or clear when there'll be appeals, and that could go on for a while. That's why we need a sewer increase, just to keep us afloat. And again, the sewer increase, if we're successful, would just rescind that, you know, a later date, that type of thing. So I want to make that clear to the council, too, where they, these two, you're on the record now. Yes, I know.
Counselor, make twice, same thing with me as if they're-
Well, you see, the other thing is that there's some kind of leverage for these two. They know if we pass this 15% increase to the sewer, that they're on hook for that too if they lose. So we rescind it for everybody, possibly, so.
Let you guys know that Tony and I went through this real, real in-depth this evening, and I was very adamant, let her know that whatever they can do, and I was, I would want to ask for, kind of wait for delay, don't do this right away with this increase in sewer taxes, of course. As you know, we get beat up most of the time, all the time, by taxing fees, so. And I'm really encouraged by what I've heard with the litigation. And we would be successful, which I believe we are, which I believe we are. I believe they're kind of close to there. I know Counselman McKinnon mentioned, in fact, what happened. I asked that same question, what happened, what if? But I believe they might be ready to make some movement towards settlement.
Correct.
And I hope it's going to help us. And Tony, I'm glad this, what Counselor mentioned, he's a record. That was the second time he did it today. But I said, because I asked the same question, I said, Tony, if we do this, can we roll it back? Yes, we can. So that's twice he's said it today. And I'm looking for that to take place. If it does happen, if we do have to increase it in the beginning and then we get, you know, the litigation settlement, and we can roll it back, which would help us tremendously. And I'm looking forward to that. Counselman Grover?
Yes, one last question. Yolanda or Mr. President, did we get any response from our letters and resolutions regarding the unjust enrichment or unjust rate increase by the Board of Ed?
I put it on the top.
I'll cover that in a second. I just want to finish on the sewer for a minute. What we proposed in our settlement offer is that the burden, not collecting these two large industrial customer revenues over the last few years, has put a direct burden on our residents. Our residents are, let's say, socially, economically challenged, okay, as far as poverty and median income rates and also unemployment. So that's the position that we're taking with the courts. As far as that response from the Department of Education about the 7.5% increase, what they're stating is that it's legitimate by statute-
Right.
...the computation. But our point was that it's totally unfair to raise taxes by $210 for an average family. The Board of Ed, according to one article, and I haven't checked these numbers by the Union paper, indicated that the Board of Ed expenditures went up $90 million in the last three years. Their expenditures. I guess they went up from about $300,000 to $400,000, some odd dollars, which is unconscionable. They can't come up with some budget cuts for $3.6 million, which is the equivalent of 7.5% interest, or they have some surplus, or they get some more state aid, that type of thing.
Was there enrollment increase?
Yeah.
Was there any enrollment increase in our sources?
1,200 new kids.
Board of Education?
1,200 new kids. And 1,200 new kids cost us $1,200,000?
3.6 million.
The enrollment part of it is.
Yep.
That's crazy.
Well, how about over three years, a $90 million increase? Where is, where is that?
Let's say, go to the private school, they spend $3,000 per year on them. Why is the Board of Ed spending $10,000 per year on a kid?
$15.
It's a little mandate. You have to spend that kind, actually even more than that. We're still at the lower base. It could have been increased to it.
Cost them $10,000, over $3,000 a kid.
It could have been cost us $60,000 a kid.
That's more than that.
That being said, can we, I know the mayor, you should does a letter with the tax bill. Can he make sure he references the-
Oh, he does. He does. The mayor does.
Half of this increase, because the Board of Ed keeps saying that they never increased taxes. Well, the reality is, they've increased it twice in the last two years.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor?
Back on the same question, I think when Mr. Many Grover asked you about the, we will have $75, you say that we will have a $75 increase, like, per quarter-
Per quarter.
-which you mentioned, 35% came because of the Board of Ed.
$35.
$35 from the Board of Ed. What about the rest? Were they, the rest of the-
The rest is about $5 to $10 for the county and the rest of the city.
$5, $10 from the county, so that makes 45. And then the city, we have 75.
Yes, the city's about 30, 35, something like that.
About $300 or better increase total for the year.
No, not from the city. It'd be less than $300.
Total for everybody.
For everybody, it's going to be over $400, sure. And again, you have closer to Board of Ed.
Depending on how much you're paying, it might be 6, 7, right?
Yes, and the problem, the problem that we have is that, you know, we send out these bills from the city and people don't want to hear it. They blame the municipality. Meanwhile, it's the Board of Ed for a 50% increase. But again, the mayor's letter is going to explain all that, and that's going to help the tax bills that should go out in the next couple of weeks.
I think the mayor should do it in English and Spanish.
It is.
And if you want to know.
Yeah, we have to.
It's all this propaganda that the Board of Ed never raises their taxes is just a bunch of bull, you know?
Okay, oh, we got, can we, motion to approve this temporary budget. Motion, second by Councilwoman at large, Patricia Perkins-Agusty. Can I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Perkins-Agusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
No.
President Gorman?
Yes, six members, is the budget approved, temporary budget approved? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this. Hopefully, that Laco and Marco and Michael's Foods-
Michael's Foods. Michael's Foods owned by Goldman Sachs.
Exactly, right. The big guys.
Yeah, right. They'd rather penalize our residential customers than the property.
Okay, next step, I'm going to do another shoe, so we can go to the simony. Are you prepared?
I'm prepared, ready. Got it.
I'm here.
Me call automatically, think all room.
Councilwoman Perkins-Agusty?
Here.
Councilman Wester?
Councilman Grover?
Here.
Councilman Torres?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedano?
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah.
Seven member president. This is a regular conference of the city clerk, city council has incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2013, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the spokesman board on December 27, 2012. Incentive of straw alleged home news tribute and compliance with the provision of the open public meeting law of New Jersey. It's time to public speaking. Any resident of type clear, like the dress city council, in any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again, any resident of type clear by the dress city council, in any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, close the portion of the meeting.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Honorable the Mayor advising that I am making the following appointments to the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library. I hereby appoint Ms. AMP Russell Elizabeth to serve as a trustee of the Free Public Library to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Letitia R. Salermo, who recently resigned. I hereby appoint Mr. Theodore A. Friedman Elizabeth to serve as a trustee, alternate member, replacing Ms. Russell, who was recently promoted, for information only.
Right. Any party, mayor, mayor's alternative, now she's getting approached. Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated July 2, 2013, from the Honorable the Mayor, subject to your confirmation, advice, and consent, is hereby reappointing to serve as public defenders in the Elizabeth Municipal Court for the period July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, the following attorneys: Candido Rodriguez Jr., DNA Hernandez Rodriguez, Elizabeth, Janine McKay Odoms, Scotch Plains, Deidra M. Mason, Scotch Plains, Celeste Dudley Smith, Union, Nuno Afonso, Elizabeth, Lyndall Scott Foster, Elizabeth, Maria M. Diaz, Elizabeth, and Lisa A. Perez, North, New Jersey.
Madam Clerk, you missed Jubilo Afonso.
Where's Jubilo?
He's fifth or sixth line, right after Nuno Afonso.
They're all together.
Yeah, Nuno and then Jubilo.
Nuno.
Jubilo. See it?
Nuno Jubilo Afonso, right. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Mr. Jubilo?
Put it on. Put it on.
Letter dated June 25, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Parking Authority for the rental of 25 parking spaces in Lot Number 6 and 300 parking spaces in Lot Number 2 at a rate of $25 per parking space per month for a period of one year effective July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. Total cost per month will be $8,125 or $97,500 for one.
Yeah. Which one?
Many, I'm sure.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 25, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to American Hose and Hydraulics Company Patterson, New Jersey, for the purchase of miscellaneous automotive and hydraulic truck parts and repairs for various departments for the period June 24, 2013, through October 28, 2013, at a cost in occupancy $50,000.
No question?
Letter dated June 27, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract with S.H.I. International Somerset, New Jersey, for the purchase of software, licensing, and training, which will encompass an automated system for permits, violations, inspection notices, zoning board applications, agendas, escrow, and billing for the bureaus of construction and zoning, at a total cost of $24,531.
No question?
It's definitely about time, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Tell the B.A., thank you.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending contract renewal with International Healthcare Services, Inc., care of dimensional management, Uniondale, New York, for the continuation of the HMO dental coverage for City of Elizabeth employees for a period of three years commencing July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2016, not to exceed $245,000.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a contract with Equifax Workforce Solutions, St. Louis, Missouri, for unemployment insurance cost control services for the period June 30, 2013, to June 30, 2015, at a total cost of $7,520.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a professional service contract to Dr. Michael R. Zabaski, Elizabeth, as the Elizabeth Police Department's physician, for the period July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, at a total fee not to exceed $20,000.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a contract with Kane University Union for data processing and telecommunications technical consulting services for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,500.
No question?
Do we still do data processing? I mean-
That, so do we still, do we work?
Is data processing, is that the proper term?
Well, you should ask that. Bridget's working on a new nominee for that department, kind of antiquated.
Yeah, it is.
So she's, she's looking into a change, I guess.
Okay. I will wait for changes.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Horizon Healthcare Dental Services, Farmingdale, New Jersey, to provide a dental insurance program incorporating the city's traditional plan, managed dental choice and total care option for a two-year term in a total amount not to exceed $925,000 per year, or a total amount not to exceed $1,850,000 covering a two-year period commencing July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2015.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to award a contract to William H. Malone, Paramus, New Jersey, to provide insurance management consulting services for the period July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, at a flat fee of $25,000.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an indemnification agreement with the Elizabeth Board of Education, covering the city's utilization of their facilities during the 2013-2014 fiscal year commencing July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to award the policy of insurance to New York Marine and General Insurance Company Midland Management Corp., Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, through the agent of record, Soraco Group, to obtain excess insurance on workers' compensation coverage and excess general liability insurance for the period July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, at an annual premium of $218,753.
Any questions? I thought we were self-insured. Who's the excess?
Umbrella.
When does the, George, do you know when the excess kicks in?
I do not know, but I can find out for you.
Ah, please. Thank you. Put it on. So you're less nobody makes-
Yep, of course.
Thanks. I'm glad you're here in Lot, in Lot of the guy.
I've got three weeks to find it.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Jetback, Inc., Northville, Michigan, for parts of, yeah, I was going to say Mississippi, for parts and repairs for sweepers, to include but not limited to gutter brooms, main brooms, and hydraulic motors for the Department of Public Works for the period June 24, 2013, to October 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Cherry Valley Tractor Sales, Marlton, New Jersey, for the purchase of parts and repairs for lawn and grounds, equipment for the period June 24, 2013, through June 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Old Dominion Brush Company, Richmond, Virginia, for the purchase of parts and repairs for road maintenance equipment, for the period June 24, 2013, through October 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
No question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Store Tractor Company, Branchburg, New Jersey, for the purchase of parts and repairs for lawn and grounds, equipment for various departments, for the period June 24, 2013, through June 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
No question?
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Garden State Highway Products, Vineland, New Jersey, for breakaway U-Post and sign support, to include but not limited to materials for street jobs for the Public Works Department, for the period June 24, 2013, through June 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any question? Put it on. I'd like to recognize Counselman Sedano.
Good evening.
Good evening, and how are you?
Good, how are you?
Letter dated July 1, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Store Tractor Company, Branchburg, New Jersey, for the purchase of two-leaf mulching kits for the Toro tractor in the amount of $1,501.76.
Put it on.
Letter dated July 1, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to P.S.E.N.G. Somerset, New Jersey, for the installation of 14-foot-tall classic one poles with fixture to be installed at the O'Brien Playground in the amount of $52,695.83.
Where is this going?
O'Brien Field.
Where is this, that's- Where is this, that's, wait, first one? First one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's six one, six one again? Again?
Remember. Remember, I voted for you against Perkins to give you the feel. You forgot that so easy.
Oh, you voted against me?
No, no, no.
I remember that.
Oh, you voted against me? You always vote, uh, that is on land, okay? You always vote. I guess it's discriminatory, because there'll be women here.
No way, no way.
You just said it.
No way, Councilman.
You just said it. It's a conspiracy.
It's a good thing we have food.
Without his hope.
Right. I didn't want, I didn't want to make everyone.
That's all right.
Letter dated July first, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Game Time Care of M R C Spring Lake, New Jersey for the purchase of playground equipment for the O'Brien Playground renovation at a total cost of seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars forty-eight cents.
Another seventy-nine dollars.
Any question?
I'm glad, I'm glad the councilman voted for the temporary vote.
I'm glad that was a done deal.
Letter dated July first, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Modern Office Systems, L L C, New York, New York, for the purchase of evidence lockers for the police department property room in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars eighty cents.
Any question?
Letter dated July first, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator requesting to amend the resolution dated February thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, authorizing an award to firefighter one, L L C, for the purchase of masks, sea burn meters, and service air tanks for the police department in the original amount of one hundred thousand dollars reflecting a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Specifically to increase the amount of the contract by two hundred thousand dollars to reflect the new core not to exceed four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July one, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator requesting authorization for proper city officials to participate in the United States Communities Government Purchasing Alliance National Cooperative Pricing Program, Walnut Creek, California, for the purchase of solar panels.
Any question?
We're gonna do some. Okay, I'll talk to Tommy. Okay, thank you.
Letter dated July one, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator requesting authorization for Nubalas Berlous Transport, L L C, to operate as an autobus pursuant to Chapter five point sixteen of Code of City of Elizabeth.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Rico American, Americas Corporation from West Caldwell, New Jersey, for the maintenance of existing photocopiers for the period July one, two thousand thirteen through June thirty, two thousand fourteen in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from the business administrator requesting to amend the resolution dated August twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, authorizing a contract with Concord Engineering to perform energy consulting services for the period August twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve to August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars specifically to extend the award of the contract to August twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Any question?
I, I do, Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilman.
They've now been on the, on our payroll for, for a little while. Can get an idea of what cost savings we've received as a result of their recommendations.
Tommy, can you guys see?
Yes. Basically, uh, I think, uh, equipment and, uh...
Whatever it is.
Thank you, Jim.
We're paying them a hundred thousand dollars.
It's not for rate, but, right.
Hopefully, we save, we save a lot more now.
You're gonna, you're gonna give some money?
Yes, I will.
Okay, Council?
Thank you, Tommy.
Okay.
Letter dated July one, two thousand thirteen from the city attorney recommending that the law firm of La Porte Bundy Varity and Kinsella be reappointed to provide the same defense of civil litigation in auto and general liability cases as well as matters included in the city's self-insurance program for the fiscal year July one, two thousand thirteen to June thirty, two thousand fourteen at a rate of one hundred seventy-five dollars per hour for civil litigation in the trial and appellate courts. Legal work required to, to defend against late notices of claim motions and for other miscellaneous matters shall be compensated at seventy-five dollars per hour together with reasonable expenses. Subrogation claims to recover property damage losses shall be paid on the basis of twenty-five percent of the amount of recovery plus reasonable expenses not to exceed four hundred fifty thousand dollars except as specifically authorized by your honorable body.
Any question?
Letter dated July one, two thousand thirteen from the city attorney recommending awarding contracts for legal representation and litigation for the period July one, two thousand thirteen to June thirty, two thousand fourteen with an hourly rate of one hundred seventy-five dollars and with a cap of sixty-five thousand dollars for each attorney when La Porte Bundy Varity and Kinsella S. flyers have conflicts of interest to the following attorneys: Edward J. Cologie, Michael S. Simmons, Linden, Robert F. Renaud, Ramford, Peter W. Spade, Mamswan, Guy P. Ryan, Tom's River, New Jersey, Craig M. Dow, Woodland Park, Alan C. Roth, Springfield, Daniel Antonelli, Union, Janice M. Wilson, Westfield, Raymond S. Londa, Elizabeth, Florio and Kenny, L L P, Hoboken, New Jersey.
Any question?
Letter dated July one, two thousand thirteen from the city attorney recommending the renewal of contract with La Porte Bundy Varity and Kinsella, Union, New Jersey, to provide legal services to the city in the defense of workers' compensation cases and matters included within the city's partial self-insurance program for the fiscal year July one, two thousand thirteen to June thirty, two thousand fourteen at a rate of one hundred seventy-five dollars per hour for each hour for each petition which includes attendance at all hearings, negotiations, trials, appeals, et cetera, plus reasonable expenses, a rate of fifteen percent of recovery of leads involving third-party actions and not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars except as specifically authorized by your honorable body.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting city council's approval of the two thousand twelve state fiscal year corrective action plan which covers all findings and recommendations in the two thousand twelve state fiscal year annual audit report.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance that would authorize the construction of a new firehouse for engine company number six, Catherine Street, in the amount of three million two hundred thousand dollars with the city authorizing obligations of three million forty thousand dollars with a down payment of one hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Any question? Before we put her on, I'm gonna make a couple comments. Uh, we've been getting quite a few questions about whether we're gonna replace the firehouse or build and naturally, people always come up with negative answers, not gonna do it, we ain't gonna do it, they're gonna do it. That's not true. Uh, we're, we're here, we're dedicated to, to that community and as long as I'm on city council, I had said to the administration, we must replace that fire engine house there. And we're gonna do that. Uh, it's gonna be much better condition, much improved, uh, for the, to accept the new apseratus that we have in place and, uh, by and large, it's the only firehouse we have connected from, completely to the north end. So as a charity, then we keep that firehouse there. Uh, 'cause we lost, you know, we lost the one up on Fairmount Avenue, so by having this one in that place, it's really the only one that connects to the north end in the middle of, of, of Midtown there, so I'll have to see this take place and we hope each one of you would support this.
Mr. President, I'm happy to because a lot of residents, um, have asked me time and time again, so they'll be happy to know. Mrs. Agar, please thank the administration and all those who had anything to do with this, um, reconstructing this firehouse. We truly appreciate it, the community, okay?
Better room. Bonnie got something to fill boy.
There you go.
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance that would authorize the anticipated cost of engineering and construction for an emergency maintenance contract for the Elizabeth Rivers Flood Control Project in the amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars with the city authorizing obligations of seven million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with a down payment of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Any question?
I, I do this. Councilman Corwin, what exactly are they gonna do?
The, uh, flood control program that they put through back in the seventies, I guess, early eighties, that, uh, infrastructure is, uh, wasting away and disrepair. The Army Corps of Engineers, uh, recommended that, uh, we keep, uh, control on it. It was damaged by Sandy and John Papetti and our city engineer, Dan Lewis, went out to check it and, uh, and found out it's, uh, it's disrepair mostly because of the, uh, the materials and, uh, I guess, building.
So are we gonna get any of this money back from FEMA?
I, I don't, I don't think so. There's nothing that, that's been said. But, uh, of course, we can, you know, apply, you know, for, uh, some grants.
Could you find that, could you do me a favor, as you're talking, and I'd like to know exactly what they're gonna do? We weren't here in nineteen seventy or something, City of Town Council, so I'd like, I don't know, I've always heard of the Elizabeth, the Elizabeth River Flood Control Project. I never knew exactly what it was.
Well, since I live on a river and it's in the sixth ward.
We have the river coming down by us too, but that's not the point. The point is not, not where the river is crossing, you're crossing through the whole city. But the question is, where is this seven million dollars gonna be spent? Where exactly on the river?
Yeah, I said South Street, along those rivers would have that, that buildup.
Yeah, I learned several years ago when they did that project in the seventies, there was a finite life expectancy. I don't know whether it's twenty-five years or, I mean, maybe if you find that out.
Yes, yeah, we'll find out all the details.
Maybe that this is largely, um, updating.
I, I agree, but I just don't know what, what exactly.
It would help.
Yeah, I'll probably find out the exact sections, but I think it's all.
It's all on the back. Mr. President, if I may, because I happened to discuss many times with Mr. Papetti, actually brought him on a side. We have bells that actually cover with the mud, the sedimentary. So you actually need to dredge and be able to open up some of those gates that will, you know, when it's high tide will close the bells. Low tide, apparently, will open up and allow the water to flow into the river. There's a lot of work to be done. Other things, seven million and whatever will be quite.
I don't know what it is that they have to do?
But that's one of the things they have to do, and there's a couple walls that are really in bad shape, but actually the water penetrates from underneath.
So we're talking about the, uh, the, the whole, um, walls that were built to compass the, the... I'd like to know where, I'd like to know exactly where we're.
He's trying to, yeah, he's trying to find out what exactly what they, they, they.
Dude, there's gonna be, it has to be a definitive list of what has to be done.
Sure, there's a lot of areas.
Like, do you know where it is?
Good question. Make a nine copies.
Yeah, I know that there's, uh, shopping carts thrown into the Elizabeth River, bicycles, all kinds of stuff. If it includes cleaning that up, I mean, what, what, what exactly includes that? That's my question.
I think it's the infrastructure, but we'll get an answer for it.
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the introduction and approval of the two thousand thirteen Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District Budget.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the two thousand thirteen state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with the K C A Financial Group, uh, City Marlton, New Jersey, to provide financial advisory services to the city in connection with the city's issuance of municipal and sewer utility debt obligations including bonds and bond anticipation notes and any other financial analysis deemed necessary for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Powell Capital Markets, Inc., Roseland, New Jersey, to provide financial advisory services to the city in connection with the city's issuance of municipal and sewer utility debt obligations including bonds and bond anticipation notes and any other financial analysis deemed necessary for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter to a contract with Decottis Fitzpatrick and Cole, L L P, T-Nex, New Jersey, to provide bond counsel services to the city in connection with the city's issuance of debt obligations and to provide for the terms and security of such obligations in accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Louis C. May, C P A and Associates, Kennelon, New Jersey, to provide statutory audits of the general funds, sewer utility funds, other funds, the single audit, and also for five-year comparative statements in an amount not to exceed two hundred twelve thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Blown Blow, Springfield, New Jersey, to be the primary legal representative of the city in all matters relating to tax appeals including preparation for trials, discovery and motions and the appearance at trials and other court appearances pertaining to tax appeals at the Union County Tax Board and New Jersey Tax Court and other venues for an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Stack Fuaham and Stack, L L C, Hoboken, New Jersey, to provide appraisal and consulting services to the city including testimony and attendance at conferences scheduled by the court in connection with state tax court appeals in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer advising that the state fiscal year two thousand fourteen appropriations act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any question?
Letter dated July second, two thousand thirteen from Chief Financial Officer requesting to receive number forty-three thirty-two approving a payment in lieu of taxes, financial agreement for a project by E. Port Family Homes Urban Renewal, L P on the property located at one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight First Street, two hundred two oh six Third Street, and two twelve, two fourteen Third Street.
Any question? Sorry, what were the others?
You're not on our, our copy.
Okay, one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight First Street, two hundred two oh six Third Street, two twelve, two fourteen Third Street.
That's the, uh, this is the housing authority.
Yeah, they have tax and blocks.
This is the housing authority, uh, of those three scattered sites.
Okay, letter dated July second, I put second, you had third, we didn't get to the third, from Chief Financial Officer. Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you.
Requesting to rescind the resolution approving a tax exemption for a project by E-Port Family Homes Urban Renewal LP on the property located at 158-168 First Street, 20206 Third Street, and 212-214 Third Street.
So Housing Authority.
So they rescind in the project?
Yeah, they're gonna introduce a new ordinance.
There's some change in funding.
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Health and Human Services Director, requesting that your honorable body declare September 1st, 2013 to September 30th, 2013 Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Elizabeth.
Any question?
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting permission to enter into an agreement with Easter Seals Senior Community Service Employment Program for senior citizens that work at the Office of Aging Program and will be compensated for their time by Easter Seals for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014.
Any question?
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting permission to increase the indigent burial stipend in the Health and Human Services budget from $550 to $1,000.
Any question?
Letter dated June 26, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary to discharge the city's second mortgage and cancellation of the affordability agreement on the property located at 178-180 Third Street in the amount of $29,203.
Any question?
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting of your honorable body to consider supporting McGill Real Estate Holdings LLC's application for funding in an amount not to exceed $1,050,000 or the maximum amount allowed to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs under the Neighborhood Enhancement Program to acquire and rehabilitate an existing vacant, mixed, and non-conforming use structure located at 279 Second Street into a six-unit, 100% residential structure.
Yeah, Councilman, I'm gonna hold this.
You wanna hold it?
Yeah.
This is, it's a weird situation on this project. This is the corner of Inzley and Second, which currently is a go-go junk.
It's a go-go junk?
I'm wondering what they're gonna do there. Are they going to completely eliminate that business, which would be a great thing, or is it six units above that and they're gonna keep the business on the first floor?
You, Council, you wanna hold it and get the information, or you wanna just hold it here?
We're gonna hold it and get information.
One more question. You wanna put it on, depending if Tony gets the information?
He said you don't hold it.
Depending on information.
But if he gets information. Is there a rush on this?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We can find that.
If it is, then we'll, hopefully we get the information between now and the end of the month.
Okay, let's say call it the end of the month.
We got three weeks.
Right, we got three weeks to get it.
All right, I gotta find out.
Otherwise, if we don't get, Councilman Torres, if we don't get the information by the end of the month, then we keep it on hold, okay? Fair enough?
That's fair.
Okay, okay.
So what are we doing? We hold it?
We're gonna hold it. Otherwise, if you get the information between now and the end of the month.
I just need to know what we're doing.
Yeah, right.
This is weird.
We're not really holding it. Don't put it on just in case you get the information, but if you don't get the information, then we're gonna hold.
That building just recently was renovated by somebody else.
Okay, Councilor Torres, that's what you want, right? One more show and say.
Uh-huh. Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting of your honorable body to consider supporting McGill Real Estate Holdings LLC's application for funding in an amount not to exceed $1,350,000 or the maximum amount allowed to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs under the Neighborhood Enhancement Program to demolish an existing vacant and dilapidated one-unit structure and construct a six-unit apartment building with nine off-street parking spaces located at 1175 Mary Street.
Yes, yeah, I'm ready to go. I don't wanna hold it. Yeah, I don't wanna hold it. I'd like to get that in plan a little bit.
Okay, letter dated July 1st, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to postpone the city's second mortgage rental housing program on the property located at 450-454 Greer Avenue in the amount of $800,000.
Any question?
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here too for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of $2,392.46.
Any question?
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here too for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $4,245.5.
Any question?
Letter dated June 26, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have a lien placed against the property listed on Schedule A for the replacement of the sidewalk in the amount of $1,008.77.
Oh, we're doing that now? If they don't fix the sidewalk, we go into it?
That's what I'm seeing with the planning council, because this is in Marroso, and I just got fed up with the undesire within that area.
Wasn't sure around.
So I asked they probably weeks ago, and I had news complaint from the neighbors and community that, and you know.
I wasn't sure that, I didn't really.
So I was able to have the city, you know, fix it. And now we gotta put a lease, so we can collect the weapons.
I've had several problems with owners that are, I'm just not following up and fixing. They've issued summonses and everything. All I'm told is there's nothing else that can.
No, 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 that's not good enough for the council. We should accept it. I don't accept it.
No, so I'm glad to hear this, because they'll give me a little more to work with.
Okay.
Thanks.
At the same time, we go.
Yeah, exactly.
If you got problem. Oh, even with Cal, I sick one, Councilor, takes my money for it.
Letter dated June 26, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of change order number one for the contract awarded to Supreme Conditioning Systems, Inc., for the preventive maintenance and emergency repair service for heating, air conditioning, and automatic temperature control systems at various public buildings in the amount of $608,467.8 to provide further for the additional repairs and maintenance at an additional cost of $33,195.25, raising the final contract price to $641,662.33.
Any question?
Letter dated June 27, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services in connection with the Elizabeth River Flood Control Project Emergency Maintenance Contract Design Services at a cost not to exceed $1,130,000.
Any question?
Letter dated June 27, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide design and construction management services for the cleaning and closed CCTV inspection of the Western Interceptor at a cost not to exceed $105,000 plus reimbursed.
Any question?
Letter dated June 28, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Black Rock Enterprises LLC, Old Bridge, New Jersey, for the milling and resurfacing of Broad Street, North Broad Street, and West Jersey Street at a cost of $529,871.5.
Any question?
Letter dated July 1st, 2013, from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant. Anticipative funding will allow the Department of Recreation to work with the Elizabeth Conservancy to construct an environmental education center on Third Avenue and Doyle Street to include interpretive displays, a green reference library, multipurpose room, greenhouse, and office space.
Yeah, it's in the second ward.
The second ward?
Yes, correct.
I would just.
President, thank you. Now, this is the second ward. This is, this Conservancy is something that I've certainly been supportive of. I think they're gonna be doing some great things by having not only the education center, but community gardens there as well. And they're gonna work with our youth in the community, you know, show them how plants and how you, you know, grow and do different things there and educate them about that. And I'm happy to see that this is moving forward and I hope that everyone will support this, this project. I think it's a great project. We're creating green space where normally we're taking green space away, so I hope everyone will support this.
This is, they're gonna use the existing building, that great building?
They're gonna try to, yeah.
Because I was gonna say, $172,000 is really high.
But they're green acres and they're continuing to look for other, you know, funding opportunities to be able to move this forward, so.
Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. President, who's this group made up? For whom? Elizabeth Conservancy? Which agency does it fall under?
I don't know.
Can we find out where it is, please?
Can we find out a little bit more?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. I just supported. I thought it's in the second ward. You know, where do you have somewhere to create community gardens and education center, you know, for, it's great for our community, so.
I mean, if we want to have a community garden, also, we're picking our bashing up. Okay, good idea.
Our letter dated June 25, 2013, from Police Director, requesting to delete handicap parking spaces from and from the premises located at 601 Third Avenue, 648 Jefferson Avenue, 926 and 1/2 South Street, 917 McLean Street.
Any question? You didn't do the.
No establishments.
Oh, you don't want to approve it?
Okay. Letter dated June 20, 2013, from Elizabeth Latin Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with Mel and Mel Productions, Inc., requesting permission to conduct the 31st Annual Carnival Elizabeth to be held on Labor Day weekend, September 1st to September 2nd, 2013, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Elizabeth Avenue, from New Point Road to Fourth Street. Music from stages will cease at 7:00 p.m., beer at 8:00 p.m., and vendors at 9:00 p.m. He has in his letter with the rain date for August 31st. Tried to contact him to see if that was what he meant or if he didn't get it.
I didn't get a letter. Could I have a letter, please?
Which one?
The one that you just reading.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't get one to play.
You want mine?
No, no, because I'll have to meet with this gentleman, Mr. Torres, and I put him on, but there's been a couple issues we had with the community. So I'd like to sit down with him, or you could put him on the agenda, it's not a problem.
You want to put it on?
Yeah, yeah.
You can keep it.
All right.
You wanna keep one?
That's okay. I didn't pick up the name or the words.
Okay, all right. But you're okay?
I'm okay. Put it on. I'll talk to them.
And Councilman Gonzalez has a request from Mr. Stabrosi Corellis, Rowway Avenue, Elizabeth, to be reappointed as a constable.
Yeah, no, he's going through the process and he's completed everything, so he can be reappointed.
So you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to make a motion to go into it, but I have to leave. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 75, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Most of you going to close sessions, moving by Councilwoman Augustine, second by Councilman Gonzalez, go for it.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanio.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gordon.
He's putting hot dog and hamburgers to eat.
Fish?
Excuse me?
No fish.
No fish? Come on. Also, just remind also, don't forget National Night is out, is rapidly approaching. I believe it was on August 7th. Over at Colored Park, please ma'am, please sir, make sure you make a recommendation to Alonzo Jones and get those nomination in so that he can, we can be prepared for National Night on August 7th. Other than that, don't forget, if we're in summer recess, we do not have to report next week. I'm giving you a time off.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Enjoy your quiet night hour off or wherever you might decide to go. With that, Councilwoman, you, and a matter of.
I mean, a couple residents called me about those, this is on Blacks or something on Morris Avenue. I guess on corner Morris and Westfield. They're in, I guess they're in public underway, like I said, Budweiser and all those other things. I didn't go by the seat because they called me and said, can you please go by the seat? So I told them there was a council meeting tonight and I was speaking to the councilman, you know, who resides over that ward. Do you know what they're talking about?
I don't know. Maybe they have something during parade time period, they might have put it up, but I'll drop right there.
Because they felt that it was, they felt it was probably violating some ordinance that we had and maybe in the right way of people driving or whatever. So maybe someone could have sent one of the inspectors over there somewhere to see what's going on. They're putting, I guess, those big Budweiser things, I don't know what they are. But I didn't go by there, but I told them I was mentioning tonight at the council meeting.
I'll try.
So you got that?
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman? Okay, Councilman Torres?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I got a couple things. I would like a traffic study team on the corner of Seventh and Livingston.
Seventh and Livingston?
Correct. That's right next to, so that same.
Election Brothers?
Residents are complaining that they're actually speeding through the stop signs and had a couple accidents recently, so.
So Seventh and Livingston, where else?
No, that's it. Next thing is, can we find out if the Recreation Department Summer Camp, I was told by a camp counselor yesterday that the kids don't go anywhere. So is there a way that we could provide them some type of transportation to visit the water park in your ward? It's only a couple of blocks. I don't think it'll be that expensive, but they bought a home and I just don't think it's right for them to sprinkle the kids down at Miller Center and they should be able to go somewhere at least once a week.
Okay.
And last but not least, I would like to applaud the Recreation Department. They had a dance recital this week at Donald Dempsey, and I think they did a great job. I actually attended. The show was wonderful. Kids did a great job. And I think this is their 13th year doing it. And I just want to say thank you to the Recreation Department, all the members in the Recreation Department.
I'm sorry, listen, there was one other thing. I'm sorry.
Just one, hurry.
The hotel management called today regarding neck lane, something about the trucks are not being ticketed or we're warned to the fact that they will be ticketed. And they said, can we not do that? First of all. First of all, there's no signage saying no truck traffic. Secondly, there's two hotels that are behind Neck Lane, which make a lot of great trees throughout the road. And they've been doing this for years and they say they, you know, they abide the law, they don't be speeding through the neighborhood. And so they wanted to know if we should not send people out to ticket them. Because I think the Hilton Hotel, one of their drivers received a ticket, it was like five hundred dollars. And it's something that they do all the time and we have no signage there, so. If we can have the Traffic Division looking into that, because they are, you know, they are our corporate neighbors, they are our business community, then we should not try to impede them. I don't know if Traffic did it. I don't know who started this ticketing process.
I'll let you, please, let me.
Yeah, I'm excited.
I'll let you know, number one is, about four, five years ago, I had advise a traffic study with the Traffic Division, which Vito Trupiana and others, at that time, I believe, Bill Dubin, Lieutenant Dubin, they all went over there, they spoke to the hotels owners and everyone over that evening, including the, those, I guess, the rentals or the parking places that have the parking lots, like Alamo or whatever. Anyway, they spoke to the hotels owner and advised him that, that the kid not use the outer street as secondary, they had to use the service room, which is straight down, down the highway. Which matter of fact, they always used to go there, they never used to come through the residence area. They always traveled the service room down to Louisa Street prior to us closing that off there. And then once we closed that off and they went down to Fairmont Avenue when we opened that up, that's when they started. So they warned them that, and, but there is signs there saying there's four-ton weight limit. What happened was, they out signed this, there's four-ton weight limit there. All, most all the street through there, Neck Lane, Jackson Avenue, Adams, Fairmont, whole nine yards, it all went four-ton weight limit. Except, you know, you do a delivery, of course, you can travel those streets. So, and then plus back, I got several calls in the end of the last two, three weeks with phone call for a resident today. Even that nice block where I came complaining like crazy. I mean, they were fired up, hey, dressed to the mayor. So, we discussed it and I said, listen, we have to do something. These people are on my back up there. And I would get called on my phone at night, during the day. So, I said, guys, gotta do something. So, Vito went back to them again this year, just as a matter of fact, just about a week or so ago. Spoke to them again. Guys, you gotta stop coming through, through the community on, like I said, on Jackson Adams, Monroe, Madison, all through the whole area. So what we did, we put those, the warning, that device that shows you flashing for your speed, which they get used to. After a while, they get used to it. It becomes secondary. They don't, they don't listen to it. They see it. Then after the battery dies, they continue to speed. So twice, two things they were doing. They were speeding through there and they had overweight trucks. So, Police Department, I said, look, they said, Council, what do you want to do? I said, go up and why don't you put radar? When I gave them one, they refused to stop. So it's not like they didn't know, like I said, four, five years ago, we spoke to them, they continued. And after, well, just a couple weeks ago, and they still continued. So, for them to say that we didn't warn them, that's not true. And that there's correct signs there for that whole area, about four-ton weight limit. And it's properly signed for speeding and the same thing. We put, got signs posted throughout the whole area for speeding. It's twenty-five mile an hour zone in that area. They've been clocked at thirty-five, and I think the Police Department said they usually allowed them. They were ten mile an hour speed race or the weather, twenty-five, they'd give them to ten miles an hour, but it's thirty-five. They was clocked at some of them, almost forty, and that's just a bit too much, and that's what the people did. Matter of fact, I was up there one day and happened to catch one of the, one of the trucks coming from the hotels, came in off of Spring Street, turned onto Neck Lane, made a quick left on Jackson Avenue and down Jackson Avenue he went, to North Avenue, flying. So naturally radar was there in the corner. Now, since he were under the speed limit, what they normally give a ticket, the ten mile an hour race, so he was overweight. So they, they gave him a ticket for overweight truck, which is a properly signed, they're saying four-ton weight limit, big as that, big as that.
Okay, well, I'll hold if you go back and let him know.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I, yeah, yeah. I mean, we gave him plain one.
Okay, Joe.
Councilman Maza.
Yolanda, I didn't get to copy the request for the county to go and clean behind Fay between Dehart and Grove.
Okay.
And then I would like to get a dead tree to be cut off on two twenty-three John Street.
Two what?
Two, two-three.
John?
John Street, it's actually, yeah, completely dead. And some time ago, I think I mentioned about Mr. D'Amico, I think I forgot to give you the information for the memorial. Thank you. Mr. President, well, I have the thought, I'd like to ask Mr. Zingaro about this notice of waiver or drug plan or whatever, prescription plans and things like that. I know I did waive my insurance.
Possibility.
Right. That means I'm also getting a prescription from the city and also glasses?
Uh, no, glasses and, wait, that stuff covered. Glasses and dental.
Okay, which I never used, so.
It's just a prescription.
Being that I'm covering under my wife, maybe we could waive all those other items, so we could save some money to the city.
Yeah, you can waive the prescription and the other items.
The only thing I have to do is what, sign and give it to Yolanda? Let me have your pen, please. I'm finished, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, I said it.
I said three things. The first thing, I believe, Councilman Keenan brought it up in the past. I just wasn't sure what was the final say with it. With people that stand in the corners wearing signs, cash for gold and so on and so forth, I just wasn't sure if there was an ordinance against it, um, when it comes to that.
Going in our business.
Going, it's just like, unfortunately, there's this one specific place, like I know, like in the corner of Salem and North Broad Street, there's always someone there, and unfortunately, they do hire people that, but also they're struggling. So it's almost like, I feel bad, like they're like using people too, so.
Mr. President? Yes, I understand. When I had that in the third ward, they went up and they gave them a ticket. I believe, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe that there's an ordinance that prohibits persons from walking around with sandwich boards. Can you make me check on that?
I believe there is, but I believe that it's not enforced very often.
Well, that's the second piece, Mr. President, is enforcement, so there's always a problem.
Enforcement, right. Most of that, I find that most things in Elizabeth is enforcement. We have plenty of ordinance, but matter of fact, they just get them enforced.
Okay. So just, yeah, just two more things. In the corner of Sayer Street and Cherry Street, right by Hamilton, of course, the school year is over, but they have a blinking yellow light. And I just want to see if it could be changed to a blinking red light. The blinking yellow light doesn't do anything and the cars fly down Cherry Street.
They don't fly.
And during the school year, the kids that attempt to cross there, I think if it's just a blinking red, would make a drastic difference. They already have the light, it's a blinking yellow. If they could change it to a red...
Then that would make it a stop, stoplight.
No, yeah, because red is yellow's caution.
Yeah.
You'd have to change, you'd have to have a study done and change it to a four-way stoplight.
Okay. So if that's possible to request that. And finally, I believe everyone's aware of President Obama trying to pass the immigration reform policy. It passed through the Senate. It's now like in the House of Representatives. And just wanted to see if we could do a resolution from City Council to all the members of House of Representatives in New Jersey supporting what our president is trying to do to try to address the immigration issue in our country. I have a copy of the, pretty much the overview of it. If anyone else, I made copies for everyone.
Okay.
Then I'll just give it to anyone else.
Give me a cup.
So if we could just do, because now, now it's really...
This is on.
So that's, that's pretty much it. If we could do a resolution supportive, that would be great.
That's a good idea.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilman?
He raised an issue about the people on the corners, I just remembered. If we could have our Police Department, our Public Works Department, the exit on thirteen of the turnpike, right by Bayway Avenue.
Okay.
There's always somebody standing out there begging for change, and that place is a mess over there, always dirty, full litter.
Oh, yeah, when you come off, when you come off, the exit, right. I know what you're talking about.
I, I see it almost every other day and I forgot to bring it up, but I think it's turnpike property, but maybe we could do something. It looks bad. That's your worry?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Whenever you come up here.
Yeah, when you come up here, right there.
I just, the last thing, if it could be sent to you, all the members of the House of Representatives in New Jersey.
All over New Jersey.
Well, it's only on thirteen. It's only on thirteen. Thank you. Go for it, why not?
Councilman Gold talks about over on Bayway Avenue, near the turnpike, yeah, that is correct. We're always sending people down there to get people out of there for panhandling and it's been an ongoing issue, a problem over there. In terms of the cleanup, that is turnpike property. I've had Public Works try to work with them to try to clean it up. What we do is on Earth Day, every year, we try to clean it up. But inevitably, as people drive through there, they come through Elizabeth, they toss stuff out and other people stop and just unload stuff. It's amazing the things that we found over there and that people unload back there. Tires and computers and furniture and all sorts of things.
You know, Jesus said, you'll always have the poor with us, so I'm pretty sure you're going to mess with them. People, you know, are hurt trying to mess with people. They don't offer them. They could be knocking people in their head or giving them off the track.
Yeah, but people don't like it, you know, as they come down, you know, and, to be honest, and it's something that doesn't look shine well upon the city. As they come in and they see the dirty and then they see people panhandling, people just well for the city when they see that coming into our city.
In major cities, New York, around everywhere you go, there's some people doing that. I took my sons to Philadelphia, the, you know, the birth of government, that was all the lanes, stuff on the street. And then see, this is, we have a free society, this will happen. And then have compassion, you know, people look at them, if they ask for a quarter, we have to just give them.
Unfortunately, it's usually the same people that are out there, that they're looking for money to drink alcohol, to do drugs. But they're known offenders there already, for the most part.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to just once again reiterate my disappointment with the letter from the Commissioner's Service Office with regard to the increases by the Board of Education. And it's so disheartening to see that, you know, they're able to do that, that seven point five percent increase to their budget and those three point something million dollars. And while it says, you know, enrollment increase and that sort of thing, I just think it's unfortunate. They say it's not a hard cap. So, you know, it's just unfortunate, and that coupled with, I'm hoping we don't have a sewer rate increase. I mean, I know I've come across people over time that just, you know, are looking, having difficulty paying rent and their mortgage, putting food on the table, particularly our seniors. You know, they're really in a difficult time right now, so.
Single women with children.
Single women with children, absolutely, and we have many of those in our city, so. I'm really hopeful that at least with the sewer rate increase.
I don't really get it, but you did tap something in my mind. Can we respond back to this? Only reason I'm saying this, Mr. Zingaro and Mr. President, is because in his letter, he states that the increase was, I'm reading it right? Yeah, I'm reading it right. It's concerned to, says something about there was an increase in enrollment. And okay, so if there's an increase in enrollment, that means an increase in families in our city that are using more of our services, so why can't the city have an increase of a two percent cap? Those children are not off, they're not living in one house, they're living in households. So why can't we respond back to this? Because this argument is very weak in terms of giving them justification. I mean, we always try to justify that our city increased in census, so why can't we increase our cap to four percent, Mr. Zingaro? Because it says it's right, it's right here.
But that would be an increase to our taxpayers. The whole point of trying to answer the Commissioner's letter is that it's just simply unaffordable. It's not that, they are complaining with the statutes, but it's a two-hundred and ten dollar increase from the Board of Ed to our taxpayers is just, you know, unacceptable and unaffordable.
Well, you can break, but he's, he's giving the justification because an adjustment point increases in enrollment.
Yeah, but my, my position is that they increased, they increased their expenses ninety million dollars in the last three years. And if you can't find three point six million dollars in the cuts or efficiencies or surplus, they have to look for something, either more state aid or budget cuts, three point six million dollars, that a ninety million dollar increase? It's just unacceptable. Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, you know, I think that I would recommend that we, as a council, pass a resolution requesting that our Senator and Assemblypersons introduce legislation to require that the Boards of Education in the state comply with the same cap that we did. In other words, we have a two percent cap, we have to live within our budget, we have to look every year and make cuts where necessary. The Board of Ed should do the same thing. And by virtue of there not being a cap on the board, it's a soft cap, that means that whatever their limit is, they're gonna max out.
Yeah.
Okay? So there's no incentive for them to cut costs. So that would be my, my recommendation, Mr. President.
My guys, I get you, Councilman Maza. Guys, my, I hear all of you and you guys have, all have valuable points. My problem is, it kind of took the wind out of my sail when we defeated their budget. Totally defeated their budget. It was on the ballot. We defeated their budget, voted, turned around and approved it. That really kind of, really took the wind out of my sail. I mean, we can send a letter back to them and squawk and squabble. I, I, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere, but it's no harm in doing, trying. But, but I, you know, they had just, they just took the wind out of my sail when they did, when we defeated the budget. Had we not defeated the budget, I wouldn't have felt so bad, but we defeated that budget handling. And that, they turned around and approved their budget, overhauled the citizens here in Elizabeth and said, hey, we don't care what you do, we're gonna give it to them anyway. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, it didn't, it didn't take the wind out of my sail. It's just that you just have to continue to advocate for those things that are right. And sometimes, right may seem like it's not getting a fair deal, but you keep advocating and at some point in time it will. I mean, that's democracy. You're not gonna have it your way all the time, but you don't give up just because it's not your way at the current time.
I didn't give up, it just took the wind out. I didn't give up. I'm still fighting.
I saw that the wind, you need my...
I was about to say.
I'm still fighting, I'm still fighting.
Yolanda, can you find out for me, their budget is public record, right?
Yeah, should be, but I never kept responding.
Could we find out, please, what is the amount, total amount of surplus they have in their budget for this fiscal year? And the second question I have is, if we could find out exactly how much it's costing taxpayers of the city of Elizabeth to educate each kid per student?
Mr. President, I get to floor, yeah, please. You recognize one, two, three, four, come on, Mr. President.
Just relax.
Not for anything. Three people cut me off, and yes, I was next, Mr. President. No, relax, it's a bit unfair.
Yeah, just, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Councilman Massey?
Not for anything, Mr. President, but you know, as a president, when I was in City Council as a president, once I recognized another member, I give all the courtesy to that member, in your knowledge I will be next. Three other people come in through, Mr. President, personally, you know, I think we should do the right thing. I have all respect, I have all the time to say, I'm not rushing to go anyplace else, but I like to rebuttal not only the previous councilman that mentioned about, that we tried to blame the Board of Education. What fault does the Board of Education has when the city increased population? We have to educating our children. What fault does the city of Elizabeth, the Board of Education, has when Obama opens up the gates on every border to allow people to come into America? Thank God, it's finally get to a point to come up with an immigration amendment or law to help the people that have been there under bandages or... under bandages or oppression by many years that they came to this country. We are people in Elizabeth, over 1,200 new enrollment in the city of Elizabeth, they're consciously coming to enroll. These children, where they came from? They're going to be living in Elizabeth. They need to be because of population, those people, they're going to be paying taxes, they're going to be paying rental and everything else. Now, you mentioned, it's very simple, I don't know why it works for the city, Tony, but it doesn't work for the Board of Ed. The seven knowledge is used. You have to adjust the cap and then the budget includes adjustment for enrollment and adjustment for healthcare costs, just like we do for our police department, your pension and my pension and the councilman's pension. Something is done with the Board of Education, you're allowed to do that. They don't do anything unusual that is out of this world, if somebody just lost a roof. That's what I want to say, Mr. President, thank you.
Can I speak, please?
Yes.
Listen, I made my point, you go, I want to make sure that we have the same thing.
Two points, because it's not the same thing. Mr. Mazza, the budget for the Board of Education is $600 million. $600 million, okay? You know what the city's budget is? 100 and something million dollars. That's one-fourth of their budget, so it's not the same thing, okay? When we raise 2%, it's about $2 million. When they raise 2%, it's another $100 million.
Man, how many schools do we build in the city of Elizabeth?
You're absolutely right.
How many books do we have to buy?
You're absolutely right. And how many, and how many people are there making money that they should? There's plenty, there's plenty. Let me finish. There's plenty of waste in that Board of Education that could be cut out. We all know that. And as far as this 1,200 students, why don't they hire some more student officers and investigate where all those people are coming from?
That's right.
I don't think we've had 1,200 people move into Elizabeth. I don't think so, okay? I know for a fact that there's students that are going to Elizabeth Board of Education system that do not live in the city of Elizabeth.
New York life is pretty expensive, I know.
There's no, no effort, you know why there's no effort? Because they don't make any effort, because it is outside the cap and because if any increase that they have, they will get more money. There's no effort by the Board of Education to cut that out. They don't want to, because every student is another $13,000 that the Board of Ed gets. That's the problem, there's a big difference, okay? That's the big difference.
You might be right, I don't have the solution to your problem.
I don't have the solution, but the solution is not 3.6 million dollar increase.
When certain people were in power before in the Board of Ed, what happened? They had the same problem.
It wasn't 600 million dollars.
Came from out of town.
It wasn't 600 million dollars.
Whatever it was.
It wasn't 600 million dollars.
The salary of a teacher was minimum compared to what we paid today.
600 million dollars.
I think, I think he has a valid point, he has a valid point, but my point is, is equal to everybody else, Mr. President. I wanted to express my feeling, which I did, and I allowed the councilman to express your feeling, but at the end, the people have to pay the taxes. Don't just blame on the Board of Ed, it's the county taxes, the city taxes. When was the last time that we cut the budget in the city of Elizabeth, Mr. President?
Councilman, I've given everybody the chance a second or three times, which is only one, but I'm going to listen to Mr. Zingaro, I'm going to have to say, yeah, we're done.
I just have one simple statistic. One simple number, we've got approximately 24, 25,000 students. Their budget, the Board of Ed is 500 million, we're talking about a $20,000 cost per pupil.
Okay.
Go to private school.
You need to spend $30,000 per student.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mrs. Zingaro, I have a pretty, everyone is doing it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one more thing, I'd like to thank the Chairman of the zoning Board of Adjustments sending us this letter acknowledging that they are in agreement with the repeal of the paraplegic queue in the Land Use Development Code. I want to thank him for sending that letter to City Council and clarifying that they are in agreement with what this body has done.
I wanted to make sure you guys sent, sorry. Last but not least, they had two individuals come here in front of the zoning board and discuss that and everybody was all up and on.
No, I was not, I moved me with you guys.
Someone was all up and on, but anyway, we got details from, from the zoning board to explain it. Last but not least, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, Councilman Sedaniel mentioned in fact, that ended up, the same thing I'm concerned about, and I think everybody's aware of this, that speeders throughout the whole city. Now, and there again, I'm not sure, but I think we might have, we have the authority and power to lower the speed limit, can we do that? We have authority to do that?
To reduce the speed limits?
The low 25?
Well, certain areas.
It's not Florida.
Certain areas, certain areas, I didn't say throughout the whole city. My point is, some places that we are getting the speeders, where it is 25 miles an hour. Now again, it could be, yet your discretion, where you want to do that. And certainly, I would want to do it in some places in my ward.
I don't know the answer to that question.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm going to find out. Well, I could say. Residential area.
Residential area.
Strictly residential area.
The answer is, you hire 20 more cops just for that and they will pay for themselves.
No, you don't have the manpower.
Well, that's what he's saying, basically, if you reduce the speed limit, who's going to enforce it?
I think we, I think we have. Well, that's what, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I got an idea for you. Okay. Motion, motion, children.